All right, so we'll move into the regular agenda for this special meeting. You call the roll, please, Mr. Lauer.
Ms. Shandefeld?
Here.
Dr. Prosko?
Here.
Mr. R. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
I've heard from Mr. Rouse.
Okay, all rise from Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance assumes the lack of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda will be audience comments. Be an opportunity for any member of the audience to address counsel on a non-agenda item. So is there anybody that wants to address us on something other than the ambulance? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into the new business, which is designation of an emergency medical service provider for Peter's Township. Mr. Lauer, I'll turn it over to you for your...
Well, I had given the background about how we had gotten here. I think the one thing that I would like to say is that, you know, from the township standpoint, we're very appreciative of the efforts of the VFW over the long period of time that they've done this. There are a few organizations like the VFW who has taken on such an important central function of a municipality and done it so well over all this time. And quite honestly, that isn't possible without the services of Tom McMurray and the support of Tom's wife Sandy. There is nobody in this community that's devoted more time and effort, the community efforts, whether it's the school board, the Washington Intermediate Unit, or the ambulance service than Ms. McMurray. I think it says a lot, but quite frankly, I've been here for forty-some years and the face of the ambulance service has always been Tom. So with that, I do think it's important that we recognize that.
Absolutely. Mr. McMurray, I understand you wanted to address us.
Sure. Some of this may be a little redundant because I wasn't sure what else would be, so bear with me. I started being around this ambulance service in 1963, and that's when my dad was one of the founding members and the ambulance was stationed out of the driveway in our home at that time. I transitioned to volunteering on running on calls in 1968 and have served as the volunteer director since 1988. I've been humbled and blessed to have been associated over the years with many outstanding, compassionate, and professionally EMS providers that have served the residents of this township through ambulance service for over sixty-two years. I was very appreciative to be invited to participate in the timely study that the township commissioned in late 2024 to assess the local EMS service in Peter's Township. I was offered the opportunity to review the draft copy of study and found that, in my opinion, there were incorrect, misleading, and biased findings and comments, but was not offered the opportunity to offer a rebuttal or attend a session with the draft study that was presented to council. So my comments are based on the prior study that I did look at. The following was the four studies that were presented in the draft study that I reviewed. Number one was to support and enhance the current service. Number two was to establish the township EMS service. Number three was to expand the fire department EMS service. And number four was to issue an ambulance service, RFP. A critical comment that I would like to emphasize is that a key finding in the assessment was, quote, "It is anticipated that any EMS provider may require public subsidy to provide services to Peter's Township. EMS services operating in communities without annual subsidies more commonly rely on revenue from their responses and transports, which leaves little to no funding for capital investments and cash reserves," unquote. My comments on the four options are that, for number one, there were preliminary discussions between the township and the VFW, but as Mr. Lauer mentioned, there are various reasons that this option was not pursued. My understanding was that the second option was not viable due to the startup and operational costs were more than the township could absorb. Option number three was not pursued for the same cost issues. My understanding of option number four was that three bordering services were approached to determine their interest in becoming the designated EMS service, and tri-community declined and remaining to have presented their proposals this evening. The following is my personal opinion based on experiences and the desires for the best EMS provided for EMS emergency medical needs of our community. My initial opinion was that the longer-term survival of the service as an independent, self-sustaining subsidy of VFW was not sustainable, but a strong partnership between the township could be developed through an agreement that contained the eventual takeover by the township. When this option appeared not to be viable, my opinion changed to becoming a department of the township. This offered many advantages, including future stability and, for a large part, a turnkey operation with existing employees and equipment. The employment of a full-time director would be required, as would increased township financial support. This similar transaction occurred in the past when the township recognized that the fire department needed support, and they then assumed this responsibility for the operations of the fire department as a township department. My opinion was again then modified when it was pointed out that the township could not afford to purchase the assets of the VFW and then fund the annual operation cost. Even after it was commented that the EMS could continue billing for services and may need approximately $300,000 or less in additional funding, it was still too much to absorb, even though we would be the only department that would materially fund their own operations. It was then surprising to me when the draft township budget was published. There was a capital budget item for 1.5 million to absorb the cost of the EMS transition. The annual purchase of the senior citizens' membership was also included for 127,000. This benefit for our senior citizens has occurred since the 1970s and has always been very much appreciated by them and the service, but is also recognized that this actual purchasing the membership and without that purchase, despite the comments in the draft study, there are still no additional additional funds provided in the draft budget general fund to support EMS in Peter's Township. I understand that this is the draft budget and will probably change before adoption, but it appears that the major expenditure has already been factored into the draft budget that required a tax increase, but this item would be a one-time capital addition to fund the asset acquisition. In reviewing the draft budget, it was gratifying to me that the council has recognized the critical importance that the fire department is to our community. When the fire department needed support, to its credit, council stepped up, and as an example, in 2022, the actual investment in the fire department was 1,787,000, and the draft budget for 2026 is 2,651,000, an increase in the annual support of 864,000, or 48% increase in five years. Excuse me. The total expected investment for the five years in the fire department operating expenses is 11,640,000, not including the additional dollars for capital expenditures for fire trucks, equipment, and a new $3.72 million fire station. My point for this is the financial support for operating expenses provided by the VFW provided to the VFW EMS in 2022 was zero, and budgeted in 2026 is zero, and the total for the five years, zero. And even more comparatively, in 1963, it was zero, and sixty-two years later, it is still zero. The VFW EMS has supported this community for over sixty-two years, and now it is time for the township to acknowledge that times have changed. My final comment is I strongly urge council to invest in the future of the emergency medical needs of our community and maintain the much-needed control of the provider of this need, as is done with the police and fire departments, and absorb and enhance the operations of the VFW ambulance service as a transition to the Department of the Township. If this is not the direction that council decides and determines that this is not a financially sustainable option, then I alternatively support the transition to the AHN service, but strongly disagree with the wording in the proposal that the staffing is a minimum of one paramedic for the ALS units, while your current VFW EMS staffs two. Additionally, it is critical that the designated ambulances are stationed and remain in our township and not be moved to other locations and non-emergency transfers. Our residents deserve to continue with the minimal level of care that is currently provided. Thank you for your time this evening and the thoughtful consideration for the best emergency medical needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Chief McLaughlin, do you have comments?
Thank you, Mr. Steigl. Thank you, council. First off, thank you, Ms. McMurray and Mrs. McMurray, for all of your dedicated service to our community. Our families go way back together, and I'll never forget it. Obviously, you don't go away, but Sandy, you might finally get to retire. Mr. Lauer, thank you for including me in the initial process of the Fitch study when we decided to study EMS and how we can make it better. And when we started this process, it was exactly that, how can we take what we have and make it better if it needed to be better? And they provided four recommendations, which Ms. McMurray touched on, excuse me. And as we started to look at those, I had gone away from the meetings with Fitch to come back and then finally read the study. And to be a part of some of the meetings that were taking place and to be a part of this proposal process, it's a lot. It's a lot of weight because EMS is an essential service. It's a service that the township currently does provide in non-transport form through the fire department. We have four advanced life support licensed vehicles. They have everything on them that an ambulance does except a stretcher, but that's a very important role that the folks in this room provide. We've obviously worked hand-in-hand with our current EMS service for a very long time, as long as I've been a member of the fire department since 2004. Mr. Steigl, remember in 2008, we sat on the other side of the table when the township was looking to enhance its fire service, and the volunteer department couldn't do it on its own. The thing about that fire department was, and still do, provide personnel to do this at next to no cost. Speaking to that, when this partnership with the township took place back in 2008 and the continued support that the fire department has gotten from the township, the township was supported by the fire department, and all of those assets were given to the township, the two fire stations, the one-third ownership of all of the large apparatus, and an obligation that the volunteer department continues to spend money on operations every single year. So we essentially are giving back as the volunteer fire department. What my job is, is I'm a township-appointed official as the fire chief, and the volunteer fire department has accepted me as their leader as well. And I take that job very seriously, too. But when we sat on the other side of the table in 2008, it was a long time, a long discussions like this that happened. Not everybody in the fire department was for it, but we answered every question with what's in the best interest of public safety. What is the best interest for our residents? What is the best interest for the community that we serve? And the township forfeited all of those assets. They raised a lot of funds. They spent a lot of time raising that money to do that, but they knew what was important and gave everything over. So I understand this is a little different where there's a financial obligation to purchase those assets. In addition to that, as Ms. Fargo said from AHN, it takes 16.8 full-time employees. That's a lot. And what it would do is four EMS personnel in the township 24/7/365. We currently have four career firefighters working in the township 24/7/365. I know it takes at least 16.8 full-time employees, and those are with calculations without accounting for paid time off. It takes a little more than that, and that's something that in the fire department, we've talked about time and time again at these budget meetings. We're currently budgeted for fourteen full-time employees, and Ms. McMurray stated what our projected budget is, is $2.6 million. Essentially, that would be a copy-paste. If you're going to have to hire sixteen full-time employees, you can basically copy what you have in the fire department and do it again. Unfortunately, you'd have to do it in forty-five days rather than the amount of time that we've had thus far. You know, when the volunteers worked with the township, it was baby steps, little steps at a time. It was constantly climbing that ladder, and will we ever reach the top? I don't know, but we're in a much better place than we were twenty years ago. That said, having listened to the presentations and the proposals, I think the township's in a unique situation to enhance its coverage for public safety. I believe that these two entities are proposing what is more than what we currently have with two trucks 24/7/365. I did not expect to be in this situation because I thought we could continue to work to where we were and become, working towards getting to that 24/7/365 and not be able to have it within forty-five days. So I am kind of surprised we find ourselves in the unique opportunity of, especially me as a township resident, having the ability to increase our coverage substantially. What I don't know in the proposals that council got is, is there a cost that they outlined? The cost of the township?
The cost of the township in both of the proposals is a continuation of the senior citizens' subscriptions and providing housing for the ambulances. That's the cost of the township.
So essentially, that zero cost that Mr. McMurray had explained before is translating into the future as well. It's hard to look at anything else and realize we might be able to get more for exactly what we're getting. My degree in my prior profession was in business, but you shouldn't run public safety like a business. It's one that doesn't really make money. But that said, it's, to pick between the two options that were presented to council tonight, I think both were extremely competitive against each other. I think both were very promising in what they have. I would obviously like to see what the language looks like in the actual contract, should one be drafted before making a formal recommendation, but based upon what I've heard tonight, I would trust the Allegheny Health Network or the Kansburg Ambulance Service to provide that coverage that's been promised. I made a pro-cons list as I was listening to their presentations and look at as a pro or a con for ambulance and chair, the size of their service area is very vast. They obviously have a very professional service, one that we've worked with before, and it's a very aggressive paramedic service, and we like that. I don't want to become a number to any service, and this is me speaking as a township resident. I don't want to become a number to a service. I want to have that sense of community, and I think the Kansburg Ambulance Service is poised to do that. Ironically, their existence exists out of transitioning from VFW Post 191 in Kansburg to now.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
Deputy Chief Caputo may be the better one to ask this, but if we go with ambulance and chair, with them having a different medical command physician, do you see that as a dilemma for you guys?
I don't. And Deputy Chief Caputo and I have spoke about this, and if he wants to come forward, he can.
Currently, we do have AHN Command. Yeah, we're recording. You got it.
He's new.
So currently, we do have AHN Command through Kansburg Hospital. We share the same medical director as the ambulance, as Kansburg. For us to transition, we can do it. It will take probably a month.
So that is something that...
It is. It is possible to transition.
But does it have to happen? I guess is my first question.
It doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to.
Yes. Well, we would want to do that.
For a seamless transition and integration into a new system, if we went with ambulance and chair, I would recommend that we do transfer to UPMC Command, just to keep everything the same. That way, if we find ourselves, our paramedics riding in the back of an ambulance and chair ambulance because they don't have a paramedic or whatever the case is, we're covered under the same command system, same narcotics, same everything. Does that make sense?
I would support that as well. I would second that recommendation. If we were to go in that direction, and it wouldn't be much work on our end to transfer Command, we would want to work towards doing that, but great question. Does any other council have questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Lauer?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. DeLong, commander of the VFW.
Good evening, council and members of the community. I'm here today to speak in support of Peter's Township purchasing and operating the VFW Post 764 ambulance service. This decision is not only a practical one, it's the strongest step we could take to protect the safety, health, and well-being of every resident of our township. First, the VFW has served this community for sixty-two years. If the township doesn't step in, we face a real risk in gaps in emergency medical coverage. By purchasing the ambulance and bringing it under municipal control, we can ensure uninterrupted, dependable EMS service without the uncertainty of relying on outside providers. Second, local control means faster response times and better coordination. A township-run ambulance would be stationed right here in our community, staffed by people who know our roads, our neighbors, and our residents. Integrating EMS with our police and fire department strengthens the entire emergency response system and ensures that help arrives quickly and as efficiently as possible. Third, this is the most cost-effective path. Purchasing the existing VFW ambulance costs far less than buying new vehicles or contracting long-term private services. The township would also be able to offset operational costs with the insurance reimbursements, grants, and subscription revenues. Over time, municipal EMS is consistently more stable and less expensive than outsourcing. Fourth, township ownership protects residents from higher transport fees and reduced access, issues that many communities face when private or regional services dominate the areas. Keeping EMS local ensures decisions are made based on our community's needs, not financial profit. And finally, this purchase preserves a valuable community asset. The VFW ambulance represents years of service and dedication. By bringing it into township operations, we honor that legacy and build a stronger foundation for the future. In closing, purchasing and operating the VFW Post 764 ambulance is a smart investment in public safety, financial responsibility, and community trust. It guarantees consistent coverage, improves emergency response, and keeps control and accountability right here at home. I urge the township to take this opportunity and secure the best possible EMS future for Peter's Township, that of the VFW Post 764 ambulance service. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to go down the list of people that signed in here. So when I call your name, if you could just come up, state your name, your address, and give you up to five minutes to speak. Mrs. McMurray, you're first up. Nope.
I'll precede my comments with a statement that this is way out of my comfort area. I'm usually in the back, so bear with me. Plus, it's an emotional subject for me. My name is Sandy McMurray, and I reside at 115... Good grief, I can't get through my address. I reside at 115 Wallace Drive. My husband was raised in this community, and we have raised three children here. I am addressing you tonight as both a resident and someone who has been involved with the VFW ambulance service for nearly forty years. In the many years I have lived in this community, I have been proud of the fact that the township council has always had their interests in what was best for not only the people that live and work here, but those that pass through to our neighboring communities. And I believe you and prior councils have done your job well. I may be a bit biased, but I believe this township has the finest of everything to provide a healthy environment to live in and to raise a family. Within those years, I have watched the VFW ambulance service evolve from an all-volunteer service to an all-paid career service, with the exception of the director, who has led these providers as a volunteer for many, many years. Once again, I may be biased, but I challenge any of our neighboring emergency medical services to match the quality of care these individuals provide, not only to their patients, but also to those families on their worst imaginable day. The philosophy of this service has always been to stay in our own lane and do what we do best, treat patients with the best possible medical care and with the utmost compassion. Our focus is and will continue to be Peter's Township. Not all services have the same philosophy. Throughout my tenure at the ambulance service, my focus has been on billing and customer service. If you invest in this service, it would generate income to assist the township in providing these services. On the customer service side, if you invest in this service, this aspect would remain. None of you have any way of knowing how important this is to not only the families of our patients, but to community members, whether it be stopping in to drop off their membership, thoughtful gifts for a crew that saved a family member's life, or not knowing what to do with used, expired EpiPens. Nor can you appreciate how many individuals our office staff deals with after a medical event, either in person or over the phone. Most patients and their families have no idea how the process works and welcome the ability to come to our office and speak to a compassionate and understanding person, one willing to take the time to make sure they understand because we know how stressful these times are. I do not want our residents to lose that. Have we, do we, have problems? Yes, of course we do. We are not like any other EMS provider in this country, not this county, this country. EMS is everyone's afterthought until they are needed, but municipalities are reluctant to help out. In my opinion, we have the finest school district, and the township supports the finest police department, fire department, road department, on and on, but have looked the other way when it comes to EMS because you could. I am grateful for these other departments, plus the ones I did not mention, but when it comes to caring for people's lives, I think we are lacking. Please take a closer look at how the township supports this aspect of the lives that live, work, and pass through this community. I challenge you to think about what kind of care you want for your family and your neighbors. Some sixty-two years ago, the VFW stepped up and formed the VFW ambulance service as a result of a deadly accident on Route 19 when no other organization or community would do so. I pray that you will find it in your hearts to step up now. I am aware that you have a preliminary budget, but I challenge you to delay making a decision tonight and do a deep dive into that budget with creative and responsible minds to find funding to absorb the VFW ambulance service to continue the quality of emergency medical services our community deserves, one that will focus and care for our residents and our residents alone. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next up, I have Joshua Cannon.
Good evening, council, Peters, everyone else here. So, my name is Joshua Cannon, and I happen to live in Bethel. I was raised somewhere else, but my name is Joshua Cannon, as in John Cannon. My family has been here for 300 years, and I'm super proud of Peters. I like to brag on Peters. I love to brag on Peters. I love the history here, and with the history that I have and the connection I have here, I just want to reiterate that when John Cannon began building Cannonsburg, which stretched almost up to Peters, he did a lot of things that he knew he was getting into that wasn't going to make money. When he linked up with John McMillan to start building churches, to spread a missionary, to build community, he wasn't doing it to make money. No, he was going to go broke doing it. When he invested any sort of money from his mill to create a college, which became Washington Jefferson, yeah, he didn't make any money. He went broke doing it, and he died broke. And, but, what grew out of Cannonsburg and the lessons we can have from being here, right here, and what Washington County became after getting transferred from Virginia to Pennsylvania, is that we have a very unique community here, here in Washington County, here in Peters, and have had a very unique, tight-knit community here in Peters for 250 years. And so, I implore this council to make the right decision. It might not be the easiest decision, it might not be the most comfortable decision, but I implore you guys, for whatever decision you make tonight, please make it on behalf of the community of Peters. Thank you.
Ray?
Good evening. My name is Ray Costain, I live 208 Hickman Street in Bridgeville. I'm an EMT with Peters Township Post 764 ambulance. I stand before you this evening alongside an amazing group of men and women who have passionately served this township with compassion, dedication, and honor for decades. As you all know, tonight's meeting is to discuss, rather, to begin the process of finding an ambulance service to cover emergency calls here in the township. This evening, you have reviewed two proposals from hospital-run ambulance services. We believe this discussion should include an option for the township to acquire VFW Post 764 ambulance and create the third essential service, an invaluable investment to the residents of this community. So, why is the VFW Post 764 ambulance service in this position? Firstly, it is important to recognize that EMS is the only public safety organization that relies on billing as its primary source of revenue. Please allow me to explain how a non-tax-based EMS service works. Our revenue to pay for ambulances, insurance, equipment costs, and salaries are generated by the money we get reimbursed from insurance companies from care that we provided to your residents. Ambulance costs are well over $200,000. Cardiac monitors, about $50,000; stretcher units, $50,000; and the miscellaneous equipment that we carry on the ambulance is another $30,000 to $40,000. We have not even discussed the salaries and benefits of the staff that equate to approximately $1.5 million per year. Without tax money, EMS is just not sustainable. According to online data, Peters Township is one of the wealthiest communities in the Pittsburgh area, and according to Business Journal, actually ranks number one as the wealthiest community. The opportunity is here for Peters Township to make the ambulance service a municipal service that is tax-based. Now, let me explain why that idea is the best way to serve your constituents. With a hospital-based service provider, not only are they covering 911 calls in the community, they are also obligated to the very hospitals that own them. Why does that matter? Well, at 2:00 AM, when a patient is in a local hospital and needs transported back to a nursing home, or to a hospital capable of delivering a higher level of care, that very ambulance you expect to be here in the township, ready to respond to a 911 call, may be out of service during that transport. There is not one ER nurse, doctor, EMT, or paramedic that can deny that very fact. We all have seen it time and time again. Now, I understand this is necessary in most cases, but are you prepared to explain to a grieving family member that the ambulance service you have contracted with to provide life-saving care 24/7 was out of service on a non-emergency or an emergency transport? The good news is there is absolutely a way to prevent this from becoming a reality. You invest in creating a tax-based municipal ambulance service that is here 24/7, 365, a service that is tailored to the exact needs of this community, a service that is owned by the very community members they serve, a service much like your tax-funded fire and police departments provide every day. I hope you see that there is only one right decision to make here this evening, and is not to invest, and that it is not to invest in an ambulance service that is owned and operate, that is, I apologize, that it is to invest in an ambulance service that is owned and operated by taxpayers you serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Eddie Cradle?
Hello. I wanted to thank council. Thank you for your consideration with everything presented to you this evening. Tom, thank you for all your service through the years, Tom and Sandy. Can't say enough. And Michael as well, thank you, and for all the first responders that are here tonight. I can't say enough. We have a lot here in Peters Township to be thankful for. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, and I apologize for my lack of knowledge on the subject. This came to my attention recently, within the past week, that this was happening in Peters Township. I haven't spoken for many years here, but I've never felt so passionately as I do about this particular topic. I value our firemen, our policemen, and our EMS service. I think it is the best interest of our citizens and for the safety of every community member that we keep our EMS service local. I, I don't know the facts here. I would like to know, what is the length of these contracts? Are they permanent? Are they forever? Is this something we're always going to have to live with? And AHN proposed purchasing our newer EMS trucks. I know our budget doesn't have that. Can't we do something to do that here? Can we, can you not somehow finagle that we keep this here? It's such a valuable, even to our students. We have these EMS people coming and speaking to our students, as does the fire department and the police department. These are people we know and love and trust with our lives. People can die here. Have you ever had a family member laying on the ground, needing EMS service? They need to be here now. They need to be these people that we know, that we see, that we trust our own lives with. Again, my apologies, I feel very passionate about this, but do not know the underlying budget information needed for this. I know this isn't free, and I know it comes at a cost, and I will be the first one writing you, saying, "Please don't raise taxes, we don't make enough," and, but, I'm the first one to do that. But this is something I feel is really worth it. We're talking people's lives here, and I think we need to keep our EMS where it is, here in Peters Township. And I appreciate all the information that was brought up by other speakers here that I was unaware of. Again, this is such short notice, and I have no facts on the matter. All I have is my passion for the people here, and the passion for Peters Township and all of its residents here. We deserve this, and thank you very much, and thank you all for your consideration for all this, and listening to all the proposals as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Skreets?
Good evening. Sorry for my cold. I also just found out about this recently through Facebook, and felt that I needed to come down and let y'all know how important our local ambulance service is. When my six-month-old granddaughter had a seizure, they were there, boom, and I was out in Venetia at that time. They got her transported to Pittsburgh, my granddaughter was fine. My husband, Mr. Law knows this, my husband had a near-death experience, not in the township, but once he was returned home after rehabilitation, your ambulance service was kept very busy, transporting him back and forth to Cannonsburg Hospital because of all the emergencies he had in the first two months after being home. But again, they were there, they took care of him. I can't say enough about them. I'm sure that because of the history of what the McMurrays have done in the VFW, that the township never had to put any money into the ambulance service, that it was a line item that was overlooked. I'm saying I'm sure it was overlooked. I'm asking you to please give consideration to not overlook it. I'm sure, just like in my HOA, we need a special assessment, we pay it. I would be willing to do a special assessment as a township resident. You want $100 from every household? Get it? I'm sure that they would not complain about that. You wanted, well, I know, some people do. Didn't Daddy say that she would write? She would agree to that one. But I'm sure that there are some creative ways that we can keep our ambulance service in our community, run by our people, for our residents, and I'm sure that our residents would be more than willing to step up to help with that. So, that's basically all I have to say. Just give it some thought, don't make a rash decision tonight, please.
Thank you.
Can I have Brian DeLong? Is it the same DeLong that's already?
Yeah, it is, but can I, can I, give me ten more seconds? Just clarification, if the council considers purchasing the ambulance service, we do not need to transition in 45 days. That was a plan that AHN came up with. If you consider purchasing this ambulance service, we will gladly transition for you for however long it takes, whether that's three months, six months, a year. We're not, we don't need a 45-day transition from the township.
Manuel Torres?
Good evening, my name is Manuel Torres. I live at 277 Center Church Road. I've been a resident here in Peters since 1998. I can't imagine wanting to live anywhere else. I think we probably could all agree that police, fire, government, sanitation, and emergency medical services are all essential government services. What's going on with the VFW ambulance really isn't a unique situation. The reimbursement for transports, they're going down. That's, that's the only arc of that payment plan. Insurance companies do not look for reasons to pay you. I have some experience in this, not in running an ambulance, but for 17 years, I worked at Stat Medevac. I was their clinical director, and I've starred a lot of helicopter bases. Transitioning to a professional EMS service, I think, would be in the best interest of the township. To clear up one thing, to be fair, both to the UPMC and AHN side, they're not hospital-based so much as they're hospital-supported. Personally, and I don't have access to all the presentation materials that they gave, I don't believe that AHN could transition in 45 days. They need to add 15 FTEs, they have to get them into their system, oriented, trained to a standard, equipped, and based. I don't see it. At any rate, I think you should strongly consider bringing on the VFW as the Department of EMS for Peters Township. Everybody supports the home team. Peters Township is growing. When I first moved back here in 1998, I could drive along Sugar Camp Road, it was farmland, not anymore. There are more and more housing plans being built in this township. I think we could find the money somewhere. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay. Amanda Laval?
Hi, I found out about this recently, so bear with me, but I'm Amanda Laval. I live at 105 Willoughby Court, and I've lived here for about seven years. My daughter is Iris. She is almost eight months old, but on September 10th, we had a parent's worst nightmare happen to us. My baby stopped breathing, and her heart stopped, and I had to perform CPR on her. And the EMS crew absolutely is the reason why we got to bring my daughter to the hospital and not to the morgue. Their care, their speediness in arriving to us changed the course of my daughter's life. I don't think that that care and that, that, the quality is not going to be the same if we outsource. My daughter is not the only person who's going to be affected by this change. It could be your parents who are having a heart attack or a stroke. It could be your neighbor who decided to put their lights up really high in their house and slips and falls. It could be your niece or nephew who slipped into a swimming pool in the summer, and they need to be resuscitated immediately. This could be your kid that, you know, flies off their e-bike and now, you know, has a traumatic brain injury. This is not only going to affect me and my child, who is definitely going to need more ambulance drives even after we bring her home, she's been in the hospital for three months now. She will need more ambulance rides, I know that. I'm not the only person who's going to be dealing with this. I hope you never have to perform CPR on somebody that you love, but I do hope, if you're ever in this situation, that you have our EMS service to support you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that did not sign up and would like to address council? Come on. Yeah. Just give us your name and your address.
Hi, I am Tracy Coller-Mirick. I have lived in the community since 1970. Born and raised here. I brag all the time about what a wonderful township we have. We are far above the rest, and I pray we continue that way. I have seen these other ambulances in action. Ours, there's no comparison. There's even a joke at my workplace that if something happens to Mirick, you call Peters Township, they'll come get her, and my mom will pay the bill, because our response time is second to none. I have sadly had to use our ambulance service on many, many different occasions, with my grandmother, with my father, with my mother, who is not with us tonight, she's at home, she's 88, and it's just too late for her to be out tonight. Otherwise, she would be here and you'd get a licking. But, we beg you to find money in this budget. I don't want my taxes raised, but I'll be the first person to say, "I'll pay more taxes to keep my EMS system here in Peters." You need, you need to hear your people. You represent your people. We are your people, and we want our EMS to remain in Peters. Why? Because there's nothing that they can't do. I have been there when they have held hands of my mother, when we weren't sure my dad was going to make it. I have been there when my grandmother got lost in the woods, and yes, I understand, people are like, "That's terrible." Somebody you know, when you're dealing with dementia and you're taking care of them 24/7, things do happen, you do fall asleep, even though one person's taking the day shift and the other person's taking the night shift, and you've got people coming in to help you. No judgment, they just come in and help. They know what to do, not only for the patient, but for the family. There is money in this community. You can't tell me there isn't some money somewhere that could be better spent. I'm sorry to bring it up, but we have a splash pad. I'm sorry, splash pad might be nice, but the majority of people here are going to need an ambulance at some point, even the people that use the splash pad when they run at some point, even the people that use the splash pad when they run and fall. I have had sadly, two instances where, and I don't want to give names, but a fellow community ambulance service. I was two doors down, and my husband right over there will testify. The man was having a heart attack. How long did it take to get them, to get the ambulance there?
Thirty minutes.
They couldn't even find us.
And they were a block and a half away.
They were a block and a half away. We citizens did the rest, but when their ambulance came, they finally took over.
Was the fire department on that call?
This wasn't in Peters.
Uh, okay.
But, oh, no, no, I'm not trying to be rude, but I'm just saying, our people know our streets. They know how to get there, and they care about us. A second event, I was working at my job. We had to call the ambulance for one of our students. Forty-five minutes later, because I timed it, my dad was alive at the time, and I came home and I said, "Daddy." I just had, the most horrific thing happened. We had to call an ambulance, and it took forty-five minutes because they couldn't figure out which school to go to. I'm sorry, there's no excuse for that. When children are involved, absolutely no excuse. Luckily, the child was okay. However, my dad said, "If something happens to you, tell them, 'Don't call that ambulance, call Peters. I will pay the bill.'" We're not wealthy by any means, but my dad felt that strongly. If he were here today, he would say, "Please don't make these people fight for their jobs. They shouldn't have to even come up here and beg for their jobs." We are a community. We pay for the fire department, we pay for the police station, we pay for all kinds of other things. Our safety is part of those things. You need not to vote tonight. You need to go home. You need to pray that we come up with a solution that will help our community. We already have what works. We just need to do the right thing and find the money. Raise the taxes, we can have a massive bake sale, I will help you do fundraisers. I am an awesome fundraiser. So, do what you need, but do not take our EMS away, I pray, because with my mom at eighty-eight, I know, I don't sleep well because she's eighty-eight, and the phone calls come 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. But what's in the back of my mind is, it's all going to be okay, because if I have to, they're going to be there, and they'll take care of her, and sadly, they'll have to take care of me too. But they'll be there. So, I thank you for listening. I pray that you take it upon your heart to go home tonight, to think it over. This is not something that should be decided in one night. We were all informed of this recently. Was that fair? No. Is life fair? Not at all. However, because of this, we're all a little sore, we're all a little bit hurt, we're all a little bit frustrated. Let's take those terrible qualities and make something positive come out of this. Let's find the money. You can do it. I believe in you. I believe in you. We can all do this, and like our nice friend here said, we don't need forty-five days. We can take as much time as we need if we just buy our ambulances, and then we can come up with a better plan. It is doable, and it's needed in this township. And one last thing, I want you to think about the local school districts. There's a reason Peters is so far above the others. Part of that is because of a former township solicitor by the name of Reed Day. Peters Township was originally supposed to be a part of the Cannon-McMillan School District. Reed Day said, "No way. It's too big. You cannot encompass an area that large." There's a reason Cannon-Mack has a lot of school closures. They cover too much land. Good district, but they cover too much land. So, anytime it snows, there is a problem. Peters Township, guess what? You might get a two-hour delay, but your kids are getting the education. The same with the ambulance. You have too big of an area to cover, you're right, those ambulances aren't going to be there. They're going to have too many calls. There's a reason that Peters Township stands alone and stands out. We've come this far. Do not let us down. Thank you.
My name's Bert Mangold. I was a resident of Peters for about twenty-five years. We downsized, we live right behind the sheets, right down. But just to give you a little story about our ambulance service. Before I joined the VFW, I lived at, on McCombs Road. I had fallen that day, broke my leg very bad, the ambulance service took me to the hospital. That following morning, my wife had a stroke. They came within minutes. Not only did they come in minutes, they had a helicopter up at the new elementary school to take her to the hospital. Without that support and quick response, she would have either been dead or a vegetable. Their quick response and their care got her out of my house, up to that middle, that school, in a helicopter, and off to Presbyterian Hospital for treatment. So, without our hel, without our ambulance service here in Peters Township, you don't want to have a, an outside firm doing this, because as you know with hospitals, and it's all about their protocols, and if you think they're going to be here every time that we need them, you better hope you don't have an emergency like my wife did, or you're going to be crying. That's all I got to say. Don't make a rash decision. Think about it like they said. Think about what needs done. And, you know, besides that, the Peters Township on our ambulances looks spectacular.
My name is Sally Miller, and I'm at 2871 Old Washington Road, and I just want to say that I think it would be great if we could keep the EMS in Peters Township. My experience is that I was a paramedic in the seventies and the eighties, and I ran with Tri-Community South, and I knew how important it was to have the people in the area where they are. It sounds like the VFW has done a great job, so I don't know why we can't continue with that. Is there, and hire a director? I'm not sure if that would solve the problem, but in my experience, I just don't understand how I ran with St. Clair and Bethel Park and South Park, and how could those communities have their own EMS system? And somebody like Peters Township, this community that's so great, my husband and I have lived here for over thirty years, and now that we're getting old, the ambulance service is very important to us, and it is kind of a concern. And I'd be great, I'd be willing to help in any way possible if I could, but I know we would be willing to even pay more in taxes, and I think it sounds like everybody here has kind of said that already, if we could do that.
To be fair...
You've got to come up to the, you're being recorded, so...
Yeah, to be fair, both services with their proposals said that they would be based locally, so I don't think that somebody's going to be coming down from West Chestnut to respond to a call here, so, you know, have to avoid...
How many ambulances? Like, I was going to add two. I mean, when I ran, when I ran, we had, we had two ambulances, we had two paid paramedics, we had two EMTs. One was a paid EMT, and the other one was a volunteer, and that was twenty-four-seven. And that's how the...
In terms of detail, were they based? One would be here?
Yeah, they did say they would base, although neither one said twenty-four-seven, if I understood them.
They did say twenty-four-seven.
They did say that, too. Yeah, I think it's important to know the area as well.
I think everybody should avoid Facebook for the source of information.
Agreed.
Because there's a lot of opinion by people that don't know their ass from home.
Good evening. My name's TJ. I live in Bridgeville. I have worked for Peters...
What's your last name?
What's that?
Last name?
TJ Marriott, M-A-R-R-I-O-T-T. I've lived in Bridgeville for a long time now. I've worked for Peters Township EMS for seven years, I've been in EMS for fifteen years, actually sixteen, now I'm getting old. The proposals you guys got tonight looked great. Again, I've worked in EMS for almost seventeen years, and I'm familiar with how these services work. I have friends that work these services, I know how they are. They're going to give you on paper what they, looks great, and what they said promises, but the people that work for these services know that they're posting on borderlines, they're constantly coming from who knows where with a twenty-five-minute response time hauling butt. It's just the reality of it. It's because they're trying to keep wheels moving, keep money making, keep patients being moved, emergency calls being answered. So, if you really think that either of those services are going to put a truck in this township and leave it here for nothing more and not post it elsewhere, for the huge communities they cover, you're very wrong. It's happening, it's been happening for years. When you're on the streets, you see it. When you know people that work for these services, they complain about it, they're like, "We're always in the truck, we're always posting, we're always this." So, I think you really need to look at the big picture, not the presentation, and maybe talk to some people that maybe do this job, not necessarily the people that present the job. And you don't have that in Peters Township. At least, this is our ambulance. Our ambulance goes to calls, they go to the hospital, they come back to the station. They're not posting up for Cannonsburg, they're not posting up for North St. Bane, they're not any of that. And you're going to have that. They're going to post up for their neighboring services, and you're going to have, when there are, you know, when a truck does get pulled to Cannonsburg from here to go do the transfer to Cannonsburg, because they're closest to Cannonsburg, and there's a STEM coming out of Cannonsburg going to AGH, they're going to pull a Cannonsburg truck, and they're not going to put it here, they're going to put it on the border. So, when there's a call in Venetia, they have another ten extra minutes to get there. Yeah, they're in the township, but it's just how it works, it's the reality of it. Again, and you see it when you do it a long time. So, just look at the, when you're dealing with corporate America, they do what they want to do and make sure they're making money. And that's the problem we're in right now, is we're out of money, or getting low on money and need some help. So, I think the best thing to do is to invest in the EMS service, and there's no other way other look at it. You're going to have services that are stretched thin regardless, or you keep the ambulance right here where it belongs. Thank you.
Paul, do you have any final comments?
Well, I heard what everyone has said here. I quite frankly...
All right, last one. Last one.
Good evening, council. My name is Sean Champlin. I am from Bethel Park. That being said, my opinion may not matter to you all, but my mom has worked for Peters Township Ambulance for over, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-six years?
Um, in January.
Twenty-six years in January. That being said, I'm twenty-nine years old. I've grown up coming to this ambulance service. I have seen many different crews come and go, and I'm sure a lot of people would agree, this is probably the best crew that's been around. They are awesome. Okay? They, I remember a few years ago, they had recognized something was wrong with my mom. They immediately took action, got her proper care, took her to the proper place, and she's here living, living and breathing with all of you. Okay? These crews mean a lot. Now, we're not only talking about budget here, but we are also talking about jobs. Jobs of people who live in your community, who have senior residents, who are friends with your residents, people that know your streets, people that know how to provide the proper care for your residents. Not my residents, I'm from Bethel Park, that, that doesn't matter. Your residents. So, I implore you to please, don't make a rash decision tonight. Take a minute, go home, think about it, talk amongst yourselves, call each other on the phone, send a text to each other. Say, "Hey, what can we do to keep this ambulance service Peters Township Ambulance Service?" Not AHN, not Ambulance and Chair, not whoever, but Peters Township Ambulance Service. I thank you all for your time, and have a great night.
Paul, I'll turn it over to you. I keep hearing to not make rash decisions. We started this a year ago.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, this...
Nothing will be right initially.
We've been at this for a while. We, you know, I've been having conversations with, with Tom and with Brian since the Fitch Report was done. When we were working on the Fitch Report, Tom and Mike and I worked on that together. So, this isn't something that's come up in the last week. This is something that we've been working at for some time. And I hear what people are saying, but, but quite honestly, I come to a different conclusion based upon the review of the proposals and my discussions with the people at Ambulance and Chair and the people at Elginny Health Network. I personally think the township would be better served entering into a contract with Elginny Health Network. I think what they have proposed is an increase in service. You're talking about two ambulances, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. They will be located here at the, at the ambulance garage. The other thing is, you are part of a bigger system, and that...
Better than UPMC?
Can, can I just finish? And that is a, a system that allows you to call on resources outside the community when it's needed. So, for instance, there are occasions when both ambulances in Peters Township are on calls. Right now, what that involves is mutual aid calls either to Tri-Community South or Cannonsburg in most cases. What, what Elginny Health Network is suggesting is that when that situation occurs, they're going to move one of their assets over and post them at the, at Fire Station One to provide coverage. That's something we can't do when, when the service that we have is limited to, to just Peters Township. The other thing is that, you know, they speak to the fact that they have seven ambulances staffed, and where Ambulance and Chair has more ambulances staffed, if you look at their report on, on page nine, what you see is, the area that they're covering is almost all of Southern Washington County into Green County, and to, and to do that with that few ambulances would raise concerns for me that you would have, actually have adequate coverage. In the case of, of Elginny Health Network, they have seven ambulances. One of them sits down in Donegal, which is of little use to anybody in this end of Washington County, but the remaining ambulances sit between Cannonsburg, Houston, and Chartered Township, which makes them fairly available in case of a need to supplement the two that are located here. In talking with Ms. Vargo, the commitment that is being made is a commitment that's coming from Elginny Health Network itself. They have appropriated the funds to cover the cost of acquiring the ambulances from the VFW. They have also committed funds to be able to hire the staff needed to do this. The proposal from, from Ambulance and Chair is a little bit more amorphous about the commitment of the funding and where it's coming, coming from.
Did you ask Ambulance and Chair if they were willing to purchase the ambulance?
Oh, that, what they indicate, if you, if you read their proposal, what they indicate is their, their intention is to buy, buy them, but when it talks about the financing, they don't make a commitment on how that's going to occur. I do think that the transition between the VFW and Elginny Health Network would be one that would be smoother. You've already talked about the idea of having the same medical command. They also use the, the same equipment that the VFW uses. The other thing is, you know, having talked to Tom over an extended period of time, the working relationship between the VFW ambulance service in Cannonsburg is one that's much smoother than the, within their working relationship with the Ambulance and Chair. And I do think if this is going to happen and happen in a smooth transition, it's going to take the cooperation of the current ambulance service to make that happen. And for those reasons, it's my recommendation that what council does is authorize a township manager to attempt to negotiate a contract with Elginny Health Network and to bring that back to you at some future date for approval. You can act upon that tonight, you can act upon it at, at some future regular council meeting, but I don't think my recommendation's going to change regardless, so...
Paul, what do you think would be the cost if we departmentalized? Paul, what do you think would be the cost if we departmentalized the current ambulance service? I mean, I, I would, I would, I would believe it would probably be high.
This, this is something that was actually put together by Mr. McMurray, and it's looking at the ambulance service based upon the current composition and the current pay structure.
Is there a reason why we're just seeing this tonight?
I guess, 'cause I asked the question.
But don't you think we maybe should've seen this?
Yes, ask for...
Can we hear what it is?
Oh, it's a PERFORMA, for what it costs.
Dollar-wise.
Dollar-wise, yes.
So essentially, you're saying, what, for 2025, it was $1,233,200? Okay, essentially, in round numbers, 100, $1,233,000 to run the ambulance.
Yeah, and, and what Mr. McMurray is suggesting is that in 2026...
It'll go up to 1.635.
And what this doesn't take into account, and this is where I think there's a real challenge, and I don't know how you overcome it. If, 30 years ago, Peters Township Council entered into an agreement with the ambulance service, that building sits upon land that's owned by the township, and the, and the, and that was given to us by the school district. And the agreement is that if in fact, the VFW is no longer in the business of providing ambulance service, the township is to buy that, that building from them at the cost of construction. Then on top of it, if we had an appraisal done for all of the equipment that's, that's over there and the vehicles. And so between those two, it comes out to about a million three. Mr. DeLong would, would probably disagree with me, and he thinks that probably the right number's a million four. In addition to that, there is the cost of starting this service up, because you don't own the account receivables. And having talked to the people at Fitch, and having talked to other ambulance directors, you're gonna go about six months before the, before the building catches up with the expenses. So you're looking at a substantial initial cost to be able to do this, and that's not in your budget.
I thought that 1.5 million was in the budget.
What's in the budget is 1.5 million. And the reason why that's in there is, one way or the other, if we're moving to a different service, that equipment has to be paid for, and that building has to be paid for. Now, that was done prior to these discussions with these, these ambulance services, and the decision, and council still hasn't made a decision which way you wanna go. But somewhere along the line, that has to occur. Now, one of the things that I, that we have done is we've applied for a LSA grant in hopes of having it cover a portion of that cost, but that's, there's no guarantee of that, and it's kind of a long shot, but...
Yeah, so I mean, well, I've worked in emergency medicine for 20 years. I've worked with Ambulance and Chair, Allegheny's team, Peters teams. You all do amazing work. I think the quality of care across all three is phenomenal. In regards to, I think that's number one, is what quality we're gonna get. I think we're gonna get similar quality across the three of those. What's the, the, the timing and response? One of the ladies mentioned 45 minutes. I mean, this is, this has to do with how busy it is out there. You know, as, as long as we're equal with staffing across the board, they're gonna get there as quick as they can for our community members. So I, I think that either of the companies proposed, and/or if we stay with Peters, you know, that response time is gonna be an amazing thing. One thing that we didn't talk about, that I know Ambulance and Chair brought up, is the ability for blood products. That's definitely a new thing with emergency medicine care. That's one thing Ambulance and Chair has to offer to our community that the other services don't. I do look at, like, who's the biggest resource and who has the best education for, you know, our, our service teams? And UPMC is the largest in our community. You know, WVU is now the second largest. Allegheny's not anymore. So we have to think, where can we get the best resources for our community? You know, and what history's showing is UPMC's been doing that throughout the years. So, it's a very tough decision. I think ultimately, we have the best interests of our community up here. So, I, I think it's gonna be a tough decision to make.
The one last thing that I do wanna mention about the transition, and, and, you know, one of the things that, that I did last week with Tom and Brian was to sit down with the employees of the ambulance service. And I didn't speak to all of them, but we spoke to a fair sample of them. And I think one of the other problems with the transition is, there's, and, and I have no idea of, of why, but there seems to be reluctance to transition their employment from the VFW to Ambulance and Chair. And that's, I don't know whether Tom wants to comment on that, but that's my perception of what I, what I'm hearing.
I, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to...
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Does anybody wanna make a motion to accept one of these proposals?
No.
I would make a motion that we table this for further consideration. So...
Now, that doesn't mean that at some point, council wouldn't vote to accept one of these proposals, because as Mr. Lauer has stated, the problem we have here, looking at these numbers, and I'm, I'm always going to be indebted to the ambulance service. Some of you probably remember when I was stupid enough to be a weekend warrior and go and try to fix a retaining wall, and the trench collapsed and broke my tibia. You guys are the ones that came and pulled me out. But, all that being said, when I look at these numbers, using Mr. McMurray's numbers and taking into account what Mr. Lauer has said, even if the township wanted to take this over in, in 2026, you're looking at an outlay of at least $3.5 million. Am I right? Because you're, you're looking at the total expenditures would be 1.6 million, plus you're looking at the cost of, of acquiring the assets and everything else, which you said was what, 1.4?
Yeah, 1.4 is the...
So you're at 3 million, then you have to figure, if you're not getting any receivables for five months, you're probably gonna be somewhere around half a million. So you're looking at, you're looking at an outlay of $3.5 million.
The VFW will run you a sweet financing deal on all you have.
And my other question, one thing we didn't discuss, if we take, let's say we accept one of these proposals and take, and, you know, give it to Ambulance and Chair, or give it to the AGH, what, and we take the building back, are they leasing the building from us, or we...
No. You know, I, one of the, one of the reasons why I think they're willing to do what they are, is that we're gonna provide them space in that building. But quite honestly, I think the township's also gonna, gonna use some of that space for...
So they wouldn't be using the whole building, then?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, like I said, I mean, I, I just, it's gonna be very difficult for us to find the numbers to make this work unless something changes. But with that, I'll make a motion that we table this for further consideration.
And I'll second it, but I do also wanna say a few things. I know the representatives of the fire department have known that I've been a public safety advocate as a council member here, since I've been sitting here, which for most of you's been quite a while. You'd hear the same thing from the police department. Public safety to me is the primary concern of service that this council has to the people that live here. Now, when I say that, I'm not meaning to demean my experience with our ambulance service, but I have had three occasions to be engaged in calls through the ambulance service. Once was for my mother, once was for my daughter, one was for my son. In each of those three occasions, our equipment was committed someplace else, and it was some other service that came and responded. And that's exactly what I feel is my biggest concern, that we had at that point in time, not enough equipment, not enough people, not enough resources. And my decision will be made, at least in my own mind, based on what is the best way to provide a better level of service to this community than what we've achieved, and which you all are very embracing over having been very successful. But my own personal experience is just concerning that, you know, there were eight, there were 10, there were 15-minute intervals, and when somebody showed up, it was not a Peters ambulance. And I was probably pretty pissed at that point in time. Okay? But that's a good thing, because I'm looking for, what is the better solution? And I don't know what it is right now. Okay? Thank you.
Let me be honest, I, I work from home two to three days a week. I have my scanner on the whole time. It, it's been high-opening to hear how many times the Peters ambulance is out of the township. It just seems like the, the fire department's being dispatched continuously for first responder details. I hear their medics go with the ambulance to the hospital. I mean, I've heard people saying that they've had 45-minute delays to get an ambulance to their house as well. That, that's a concern for me. Like I said, two to three days a week, I have it on the entire day, listening to it, and, I mean, I think it's unacceptable.
So this council is thinking about, how can we make it better? Okay? Or at least some of the council.
I think they all are.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second.
Yeah, motion, a second, a table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's it. Thank you all for coming.